The Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, before we start down our agenda, there are a couple of acknowledgements that I wanted to make. One, Sam Gaultieri, who was a longtime assistant principal at the high school, passed away just recently. For those who remember him and knew him, he was a great guy, great with the kids, did a fine job, worked for the town for a lot of years. He's been retired for quite a while now, so he had a good retirement, so good for him. But he was a very good man, he'll be missed, and our thoughts go out to Sam's family. I'd also like to announce or just acknowledge, because it's already been announced, Bob Conceition, who's a longtime hockey coach here at the high school, announced his retirement at the end of this season. Again, Bob's been doing it for a long time, he was also a teacher, head of the English department at the high school for a long time. He's had remarkable success, a long run of teams that have run through the state tournament, got a couple of state championships, two of them back-to-back. Just a fantastic record, and as good of a coach and teacher is, he's a better guy. Anybody who ever met Bob just likes him, he's just a good guy, do anything for you. He's been a great member of the community for a lot of years, great family, so congratulations, Bob, for a wonderful career, and good luck in your retirement, and hopefully you'll enjoy it. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the February twenty-eighth meeting, and also of the February sixteenth, I'm sorry, the February eighth meeting and the February sixteenth meeting. We'll take that in two votes, the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Moved and seconded to approve the February eighth, twenty-twenty-two minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously.
What's the other date?
February sixteenth.
We approved the February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two minutes.
Second that?
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, that also passes unanimously. Next item is the approval of the warrant as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the warrant as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, aye, that's approved four zero one. Before we move on to public participation, I just want to turn the floor over to Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, before public participation, I just wanted to acknowledge that an employee, a member of my district leadership team, had to deal with language that made us question his safety. I want to state that we will not tolerate this treatment of anybody. I thank the committee for your collective and immediate response, and the immediate support extended by the Burlington Police Department, Chief Brown, and Deputy Chief Kirchner. I want to apologize to Mr. Porch. As a community leader, we can do better and we will do better. I'm sorry, Ray. I stand with you, I appreciate your significant contributions to improve the district in your short time here. You've done a lot. Finally, I've learned that this incident is like a pebble in a still pond. There are ripples that have triggered responses from other members of our community, including students. In addition to addressing the immediate concern, we need to offer our support to those who may have also been impacted by this event or had this event trigger feelings from prior experiences. We will be providing this support. So again, Ray, I apologize, that's not a good reflection of the organization, and we will do better.
And on behalf of the committee, I would echo everything the superintendent just said, Ray, and I have full confidence from getting to know you over these past six months, to know you are going to be able to overcome this hurdle and move forward, and I look forward to working with you as time goes on, so apologies.
Yep.
Continued success.
Yes, thank you.
All right, public participation, and again, I probably should have read this at the beginning, this is a public meeting, obviously, with public access. However, we're also running this meeting through WebEx, and we do have the ability to have participation remotely. Those who choose to do so can watch this meeting on the WebEx website. The meeting number, access code is two-three-three-two-seven-two-one-zero-four-one-nine, and the meeting password is Tuesday. So having said that, this is time for public participation. Policy is anybody who wants to speak on something that's not otherwise on the agenda has the opportunity to do so. Public comment is limited to three minutes. So with that said, is there anybody who has public participation that they want to bring forward? Yes, ma'am? If you're just sitting at the table over here where the microphone is, identify yourself, and the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Melissa Massardo, I am a member-at-large of the Burlington Transportation Committee. Mrs. Bond is usually the school liaison, and I know she had a family conflict this week, so I just wanted to update on what we discussed in the meeting, because it's relevant to the school committee. We had Judy Crocker from the Safe Roads to School come present a presentation to the Transportation Committee. It's the same presentation she presented in August, and then that was one of the impetus is to create the Transportation Committee. It was well-received presentation. One of the highlights, I think, was that the program's used in sixty-five percent of communities in Massachusetts, and I thought that was a really good bode for the program. Dr. Conti did sign us up to participate in the program in the fall. If we stay involved, we'll be eligible for state funding from that program this coming fall, September. Engagement in the program is one of the top criteria for determining who gets the funding, so I really hope that the school committee and the Transportation Committee can help the town stay very engaged with the program. In addition to the funding, there's multiple free options, they offer engineering support, transportation creation programs, things like that. So the Transportation Committee has decided to engage with, there's two parents, myself and another member on the Transportation Committee, who have children at Fox Hill and Memorial School, so the Transportation Committee has decided to begin engaging with the principals there, and has already spoken with both of them to start taking advantage of some of these free programs as soon as possible, and we look forward to working with that program.
Thank you. Is there anybody else remotely, Bob, who is looking to publicly participate?
At this time, there are no hands raised on WebEx.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is informational reports, subcommittee reports. We just heard one from the Transportation Committee, anybody else have anything they want to bring, Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a report from the Town DEI Subcommittee. And Mrs. Downey, I have this one typed out, so if you want, I can send it to you later, sure. So this past Monday, on February twenty-eighth, the Dr. Addison Reed, who's the Chair of the Town DEI Subcommittee, presented the first quarterly report to the Select Board. To say that that report was not received well is putting it mildly. If anyone hasn't seen what was going on, I encourage you to go and look at the video on the BCAT site. But to borrow a phrase that this district has used in the past, I felt that we need to mark the moment. So I will say now what I couldn't find the words to say at that time. There were comments from Select Board members about our report saying that there was too much information, some of the words were too hard to understand. But what we need to realize about this work is that that is just what it is, it's work. The processes aren't going, and it requires effort by all of us. It is not going to be easy, and we all need to lean into what is trying to be done. There were other comments about questioning why this work is necessary, and how equitable treatment of others starts at home. I agree with the sentiment, but it is clearly not enough. Hateful incidents occur in this town far too frequently, including threatening commentary directed, directly tied to that Select Board meeting. But we feel that we need to codify in our town documents what we all agree to be of the values of equity, diversity, and inclusion. Symbolism and practicing what we preach will go a long way to showing that we truly care about everyone that we live and work alongside. The efforts that the Burlington Public Schools are currently undertaking should serve as a model for what the town can do. The school's equity audit is underway, I look forward to Thursday night to hearing more, and tonight, obviously. And this will help the schools look in the mirror of where we currently stand, and help provide a roadmap of where we need to go. The town must undertake similar efforts. This self-reflection will show many bright spots in our community, but there are also parts that we will not like. Nevertheless, we need to be clear-eyed, forthright, and strong in the continued efforts of the Town DEI Subcommittee. There has been an outpouring of support from numerous members of our community, which encouraged the members of that Subcommittee. Our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night, where we continue to process the reception to that first quarterly report, and discuss the next steps for the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Can I ask you a question? Carl, what's Thursday night?
That is when, isn't it Thursday when we're hearing about the equity audit in more details than we're going to get tonight?
Where, how?
It's on the agenda when we get to the equity audit update, so we can go, we were going to include an update at that time. I think you should have received it, but if not, that's my fault, I will make sure that you get the flyer.
I'm just wondering what Thursday night is, that's all.
It's part of the process where they're going to introduce some of the process to, in a town hall format. So we can, we'll go over that when we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
Sorry for that confusion.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else have any Subcommittee reports they want to bring forward?
Yes.
Christine?
Well, the Special Education CPAC does not have a report for tonight, so we won't be looking for that. Martha, do you have any?
Yeah, I have some other reports, are you done with that?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, I mean, if you.
Yeah, I did have some. I actually have a couple of announcements I wanted to make, and I actually don't have the exact, I wanted to give a brief update on the negotiations with the BEA. We unfortunately have not met with the BEA since, I think it was January, I don't have the date right in front of me. We, at that time, we offered a new proposal, and after that, both sides did appear to be encouraged with that. However, we have not met since January. We had to wait a long time to get a date back from, some dates back from the BEA, and the date that people could meet is not until March thirty-first, so it's hard to wait. It's frustrating for everybody on both sides, and we just, I just wanted to give that update that there is a new proposal out that we are feeling hopeful about, and I hope that we'll be able to resolve the contract relatively soon. Is there anything you want to add to that?
We did have a meeting scheduled in February, but the teachers' union had to cancel it.
Oh, that's right.
Someone couldn't make it, and so it's just sort of a frustrating spot to be in that we have not been able to meet at all since January, and we've asked for dates, but it's hard for everyone to get together, so it won't be until the end of March that we meet again. But as Martha said, we did have, I think, a very good proposal, and I hope that we're close.
I have a couple other announcements, I don't have any Subcommittee reports. But I did want to acknowledge that today, March eighth, is International Women's Day. It's not something that we in the United States notice very often, but there are people all over the world who celebrate International Women's Day, including some countries who have it off as a federal holiday. And I just want to acknowledge the importance of women's rights and women's suffrage, and women's ability to participate in community, and that's what the International Women's Day is about. So I want to say that. I want to congratulate the Marshall Simons students and staff for the National History Day projects, which they've been working on for months. I was fortunate enough to go this afternoon to the middle school, and in the library there, in the media center. There were projects all over the room, there were videos, there were these big, huge poster boards, there were written and typed up reports that students from sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders had won and moved into this next round. I think I heard we had ten students going on to states, we have a lot of students going on to the states. Their projects ranged from censorship of music to W E B Du Bois, to the NA, well, and actually, it was funny, because the kids who did the NA, the W E B Du Bois talked about how he helped found the NAACP, and I said, well, I belong to the NAACP, and they were like, really? And I have a feeling maybe they didn't know it was still a thing, it's not just in history. So that was kind of fun, and the kids were very excited, they were very articulate. And I know that Barbara Sturdivant, and John Carroll, and John, the Latin teacher, Jen Walsh, right, who I've met twice, and I'm embarrassed that I forgot his name, but they were there, and they really helped the kids put these projects together. They were quite well-done, and I just want to congratulate all of them, and wish them good luck at the states. I also want to report on our sports seasons, and I'm not really the expert on this, but I noticed about a few, couple of weeks ago, that our boys gymnastics team won the two thousand twenty-two MIAA State Championship, which is pretty spectacular. And I thought, I know there are other teams that are doing really well, so I got some more information. And I know our girls indoor track team won, which was the first time that program won. I also know that the girls gymnastics team placed fifth at the state meet. The wrestlers, the wrestling team has two wrestlers in the top seven at the states, and also went on to the New England Championships. Girls ice hockey made it to the tournament, girls basketball made it to the tournament. The boys' basketball was seeded third, and they are playing right now, we got to see the first half of the game, and they were up thirty-six to twenty-eight at halftime, but we're not going to jinx anything. And they're playing Long Meadow tonight, so that's in the round of sixteen, which is, I don't know if that's quarterfinals or whatever you call it. But I think my point is that congra- We're up ten now, okay, good. And it reminded me how much fun it is to go to a high school basketball game, because my daughters have graduated a long time ago, I haven't been in a long time. But it was very exciting, and I want to congratulate all of the winter sports teams, because I know that whether the kids made it to the tournament or not, the point is to have a good time, and learn, and grow, and be part of a team, and I'm just so proud of all of the kids and all of the teams. So I just felt like I needed to say something. Mr. Nelson used to report a lot on the track team and some of the other sports teams, but I feel like I've sort of taken on that role now, because a lot of kids in our schools are involved with sports, and I think it's really wonderful. And as an aside, I think it's another thing that the school committee, over the years, from long before I've been here, made a point of having no fees for playing sports and for other activities, and it means all of our children in the schools can play sports, and participate, and have fun, and learn, get friends, and learn different kinds of skills, other than the academics that they get in the school day. So I'm just really pleased that we can see that year after year being shown in our kids. My last thing for announcements is that Thursday, either at four o'clock or at six o'clock, Amy Warfield from the Clerk's Office and the town's lawyer are going to present on the open meeting law, and they need somebody from all of our boards, and at last I talked to Amy, I was the only one who had said anything to her at all. I can go unless it conflicts with this town hall on the equity audit, okay, from six to eight? Because I can't go to the four o'clock. Anyway, is there someone else? I have been to two of these open meeting law presentations before. So if there's someone who has not been to one, I think it might be valuable to hear the details in person and be able to ask questions. So I'm bringing this to the committee, asking if there's someone else who can and would be interested in going on Thursday, either at four o'clock or at six o'clock.
Chris just said yes.
No, I didn't. I have been to plenty of them.
No, nobody else, okay. Okay, so Carl.
We'll all individually take our advisement and talk to you before the night's over.
Okay, that's great, if somebody let me know if they can, and if not, I will go at six.
And if you're looking for a second career, ESPN is hiring for sports anchors.
Okay, all right. Okay, so those are all my announcements for tonight, thank you all.
Okay, is that it for Subcommittee reports?
Just one more, not nearly as exciting, Mr. Chair, and I know Mr. Nelson would be thrilled. So on behalf of Mr. Nelson, thank you, and I'm glad the basketball team is scoring touchdowns. So.
Touchdown?
We have a three-point shooter who's pretty incredible, I have to say.
Nicole, did Roger get us the dates for the Subcommittee meetings?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to, could we, do you guys have them, or I just want to make sure?
Nicole sent us a note.
Oh, so you have them, okay, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
For the Ways of Meeting.
No, for the Education Subcommittee meetings, I just want to make sure, because I obviously lost the email before, so you guys have them?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that's my.
Thank you. Is Roger on the call? Do you have anything for us, Roger?
Nothing just now, looking forward to things later in the agenda.
Okay. Student Representative Brooke Holvast is actually at the basketball game tonight, so I wish I was there with her, but nevertheless.
One smart girl being at the basketball game.
Yep, so we're going to move on to item six under learning, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to turn it over to Mr. Porch, to talk about the K-12 art program, and introduce Mr. Rakovic.
Yes, we're super excited that we have Mr. Rakovic on with us tonight to share what's happening with the arts program. Mr. Rakovic, you there?
Yes, I am.
Terrific, well, thanks for being here, yeah.
So I'd like to start by talking about Francis Wyman mural that was just painted by Bren Bataclan. And Bob, Mr. Coon, if you could share your screen and click on that first link that I sent you?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm going to ask Bob to sort of scroll down slowly on this series of photos that was provided by Ms. Lauren Vino, who is our teacher at Francis Wyman. Francis Wyman has a history of artists-in-residence, working with students while making long-term artistic additions to the school with the support of the PTO. And they've done some wonderful things over the past several years, I think, you know, for decades, they've had artists-in-residence coming. So Bren Bataclan is a, he is a Boston-based artist, he started out in California, he's an animator and a cartoonist, and he's known for something he calls the Smile Project, in which he gives away his art, he just leaves it there for people to get with a note saying that you can take this, it's yours, as long as you promise to smile at other people, random strangers, more often. And he came to speak to our school, the high school, a couple of years ago, and shortly after that, I think, Ms. Vino approached him and asked him to do a mural. So this is a two-year project, it was meant to happen right around the time that we stopped going to school for a while. And so here he is, working with the kids in the school, every student in the school had some participation in this. They worked with their homerooms, and they came up with thirty different things, thirty different items, thirty different things that students felt they needed, or would help them to be the best person they can be. And to be well-rounded individuals. So every homeroom came up with a drawing that was based on the ideas of all the students who were in the classroom. And then Bren took those ideas, he talked to the students, did this all virtually, talking in the art room to students in their homerooms online. And every once in a while, during specials, he would get the kids to sit there and ask questions while he was working. So again, this was a, took a week, I think he did this in a week, full participation from all the students who were there in the school. The theme was Soaring Into the Future, and it's based on Francis Wyman's SOAR model, which stands for Self-Control, Outstanding Effort, Acts of Kindness, and Respect. And you'll see in the last one, Bob, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, thank you for going at this rate, you're going to see a final version of the whole thing, so you can click on that. And that is a representation of all the students' drawings from the different homerooms combined into one artwork. So I thank Ms. Vino for putting this together, Bren for coming. He did speak, as I mentioned, at the high school a couple of years ago, and we loved having him there, and I think he's really energized Francis Wyman as well. So that's the first thing I'd like to share. The next few things have to do with our exhibitions, and awards that have been received over the past couple of months by our students. I did invite several students to come, I know, I see that one of them is here, I'm going to check for others as I call out their names, but I have a feeling they got caught up with things. So Navi Agar, Bob, if you can click on that image, that's called "History is All You Left." This is a photo that she took and then manipulated this year, so it was actually hanging in a show last year, and as a photograph. And she worked on top of it, now it's collage, and I believe either whiteout or paint. It won a recognition in the Emerging Young Artists Exhibition at UMass Dartmouth, and it is also currently on exhibit at the Lexington Regional High School Art Show with a number of other schools, we do this together. And then Navi's work will also be in an upcoming show at the Griffin Museum in Winchester called Photosynthesis. This is something that the Burlington Photo Classes do with the Winchester Photo Classes, with the museum and with visiting artists as well. So that's Navi's. Isabel James, I know, is not here, so I'm going to ask Bob to click on her work. Again, another award winner from Emerging Young Artists Exhibition, it's an online exhibition this year that was put on by UMass Dartmouth. Several of the photos you're going to see have, were in that show. This one is called Surreal Reflection. The next one is by Georgia Doherty. And this one's called People Pleaser. Again, Emerging Young Artists Exhibition, it has also won an award for the Scholastic Art Awards this year, it was an honorable mention. And just as a side note, Georgia also won a Silver Key for Writing at the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for a personal essay and memoir called "A Dancer's Body." This is also in the Lexington Arts and Craft Society Show, it's currently up for the next couple of weeks. And she did leave me a note, "People Pleaser expresses the struggle of creating a false persona to meet the wishes of others. It's easy to change yourself to make people happy, but it comes with the cost of not being able to recognize yourself." The next photo, another Emerging Young Artists Exhibition winner, and also an honorable mention at Scholastic Art Awards, is called "Pose," this is by Caroline Shirata, also up at the Lexington Regional High School Art Show. All three of the artists that I just mentioned so far are all going to be in the Photosynthesis exhibit at the Griffin Museum. This particular photo was part of our fashion photography project that they did in their advanced photo class. She chose a friend of hers who was into fashion modeling, allowed the friend to model the outfit she wanted to show off. She then chose a photo space that matched the outfit, and wanted to showcase both outside photography and modern fashion setting. The next series of works, and Bob, this one is, this is a folder, if you wouldn't mind just sort of clicking through them. This is by Paul Fowler. Paul won a number of awards at Scholastic Art Awards this year, I will mention that he got, let's see, he got a gold key for a photograph called "Paul," he got a gold key for one called "Psychosomatic," a silver key for a photo called "Dots," a silver key for his art portfolio. He got a gold key for one called Psychosomatic, a silver key for a photo called Thoughts, a silver key for his art portfolio. And then three honorable mentions, um, for a variety of photos. Uh, these all have to do, he was, he meant to, to come today, but he's actually taking a course at the Institute of Contemporary Art that meets, meets on Tuesdays, and he was caught in traffic on the way up. So he wasn't, wasn't able to talk about this. And this is a little video of his, um, portfolio. Uh, it is, uh, interactive. Uh, there's sound involved in it. Um, I'm just gonna ask, uh, Bob to just show a, a few seconds of it. And his work has to do with OCD and, and his, um, his experience with that. I guess it's not playing very smoothly, so that might be one we can, we can, we can skip. Um, the ne, the next one is, um, by Anna Pearl. And Anna asked to show her, um, her gallery. She, she'd meant to speak today. Let me see. Anna, are you out there? So, um, I'll, I'll speak for her. So this is, um, Anna did also win, uh, three honorable mentions for, uh, three paintings that she had done at the Scholastic Art Awards. She also had a solo show in our Cambridge Street Gallery, which is a in-school gallery across from the cafeteria. We have a variety of, um, artists represented there. We often have local artists, um, and, uh, artists in the community, but we also use it as a space for students as well. And so she, we just took down her show, uh, last week, and these are some examples of the work that was in there. And Bob, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling down a little bit. The piece you're seeing here was a self-portrait, um, called, uh, Book Reading in 1662, based on Johannes Vermeer's paintings, um, from that time. And, um, it won an honorable mention in the Scholastic Art Awards. These works are also right now, or many of them are in this Lexington Regional High School Art Exhibition. And she's also planning on putting one of her works in the Congressional High School Art Competition and Exhibition this weekend, and that's sponsored by Seth Moulton. It's a, a great exhibition that's put on at the Montserrat, Montserrat College of Art. The next artist is Michaela Giordano, and I did see that Michaela is here, so I'm gonna ask her to speak about her work. Uh, unfortunately, I'm putting her on the spot as the only student who, who showed up today, but this is a beautiful piece that she's gonna tell you a little bit about right now.
Yeah, so, um, this is my self-portrait. Um, I did this during remote learning last year. It's pretty big. Um, I did it in my room, and it's, right now it's going up in the Lexington Art Gallery. Um, and it was sort of like a, um, just like all my skills that I've been learning for the past three years really came together in this piece. And it's won a couple of awards, so, yeah.
Thank you, Michaela. This is one, uh, uh, Emerging Young Artists, uh, Award, um, Scholastic Art Awards Honorable Mention, um, is also here as well. If you can click on that, Bob. It's also by Michaela. And would you mind, Michaela, just talking about your portfolio a little bit for Scholastic Arts?
Yeah, so last year I did my, uh, sustained investigation on identity. And it basically focused around three different aspects of what I thought was important about identification. It's basically how you identify as a person, how others perceive you, and then sort of like your morals and how you present those to the world. So they're sort of, I did a series of portraits, and then like animal figures as people, as like others' perception of you. Um, and then I did a couple pieces of street art that was, um, inspired by Banksy and represented more of the moral aspect to identity.
They're really great pieces. Um, Le, uh, Michaela's work, many, many new pieces of Michaela's work are, are also on display in Lexington right now. And, um, she'll be taking over the gallery space, uh, to continue her sustained investigation for this year. And, uh, she's working with 3D design. So when she, when we say sustained investigation, the students in the AP class have to create a series of artworks, a, a series of fifteen images that are all, um, related to each other. It's a body of work that, um, fulfills, uh, or, or, or attempts to answer a, an inquiry that the student comes up with for themselves. And it's a, it's a big part of their AP exam. And, let's see. Let's see what I have here. Final thing, I think, is going to be, um, the, uh, just to mention again of the Lexington High School Art Major's Exhibition. And Bob, um, this last, the last link is a folder of images. I, if you wouldn't mind just clicking on that and just clicking on the first one and, um, maybe giving each image a sec, a, a second. These are all images that are, um, currently on exhibit with, uh, the work of Winchester High School, Bedford High School, Minuteman Tech, Waltham High School. It's a show that we do every year at the Lexington Arts and Craft Society, which is, uh, on, uh, Waltham Street, uh, about a, maybe about fifty yards away from, uh, ma, the main street. From it, from the center of town. It's a really great show. This work is on from this past weekend up until March twentieth. There's gonna be a reception for Burlington on the, I believe it's Friday the eighteenth in the evening. And it's a great, it, it's a great show. We get to see what other schools are doing. We get to touch base with, as we're hanging, we get to touch base with the, um, uh, teachers from the other schools and really connect with the Lexington community. A lot of them enter while we're putting the show up. So it's a really, uh, really happy and a really beautiful space.
George, Mr. Eric.
That date again, you said Friday?
Friday, uh, Friday, March eighteenth. From, I believe it's from seven until eight-thirty, and the address is, um, 130 Waltham Street in Lexington.
And could you repeat when it will be at the, uh, Arts and. The Lexington Arts and Crafts Building until?
Yeah, it's, it's there until, it's there until March, uh, March twentieth. So that Friday is the last Friday evening that people would be able to see it. The, 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 the gallery's open from eleven to five, from Tuesday to Friday, and on Saturdays and Sundays, it's open from ten to five. But they're having a special reception for, um, Burlington. Usually we have one reception for all the schools, but we didn't want a large, we didn't want a large crowd, so they separated it by school for the receptions. And I just, a final, uh, just a final note as, um, as we, uh, we look at these images. I, uh, I love this quote by Michelangelo of Sistine Chapel and Pieta fame. If people knew how hard I worked to get my mastery, it wouldn't seem so wonderful at all. I just always feel like, I, Michaela will tell you that I'm, I, I don't gush about things. And, um, and because I know how hard it is, uh, what they're doing, that, that beautiful, beautiful painting that Michaela put together, that self-portrait, all done at home, um, over the course of weeks and weeks and weeks. I mean, she could tell you how long she put in, how many hours, how, how much blood, sweat, and tears she put into that. Um, it is not magic. It's really hard work, and it requires a lot of dedication. So I thank her for, for, first of all, for coming here and for, for doing that painting, 'cause I think it's one of the best, um, self-portraits that have been done in Burlington since I have been here. And all done at home during a remote learning. Thank you, Bob. Not to, not to, um, cut short the, uh, the other pieces, though, but there's a lot of beautiful work up at, at the Lexington show, so I hope you all can make it.
Well, thank you, thank you, George. Um, and in line with that, uh, we'd like to, you know, uh, share a little bit more about some of this, this great artwork that students have, um, been exploring and experiencing with George. George, you're still there, so we're hopeful that, you know, you can discuss the, the High School Art Department field trip, uh, to the Metropolitan Museum, um, in New York City, depending on approval, uh, from the museum of choice. The, of, you know, the dates of Friday, I think April twenty-ninth was the first date. Um, and then there was a Friday, April eighth, Friday, May sixth. And this is a one-day field trip, and the cost of the trip is seventy-five dollars per student.
Yeah.
Plus money for meals, and the art department is planning to fund part of the trip through the Arts Department, uh, Contract Services account to bring the cost down for each student. Admission to.
That's right.
Admissions is, uh, from what we're, we're seeing here, for the schools, uh, groups is twenty-one dollars per student, twelve, uh, per adult chaperone, and twenty-five for additional chaperones, plus a fat, a, a flat two-hundred-dollar fee per class. Is that right?
That's right.
And, uh, the total cost is twenty-two hundred dollars. The group will be accompanied, accompanied by at least three adult chaperones, including the instructor. Uh, this is a one-day, again, one-day field trip. The bus will depart from Burlington High School at six-thirty AM and will return approximately at ten-thirty PM. Did I miss anything here, George?
No, that sounds, that sounds alright. Um, we will be funding, uh, much of it through, uh, through both a, an activity account that we, we seem to somehow have a surplus of money in from a previous field trip. So we'll be able to, to use some of that. Um, and, um, and also some contract services funds as well, uh, to pay for this. I think it's a really valuable experience. The kids haven't been able to go on a field trip in, in a couple of years now. Uh, this is a, uh, we've always, in, in the past, up until about five years ago, we had always done a New York trip. And, uh, um, in, in years past, it had been, uh, run by, by Lexie Georgievic, our photo teacher, and Keith Missler. And, uh, and prior to that, I was doing it every year. We would switch off between the Museum of Modern Art one year and the Metropolitan Museum the next. Most of the kids, uh, would stick with us from year to year, so they got to see both. Uh, this year, it's been really hard to just schedule a museum that, MFA in Boston is not taking group trips right now. Uh, the hours, um, that the Isabella Sturger Gardner Museum is, is, uh, is open for, uh, and able to service us, doesn't really work with our bus schedule. So it's the regular daytime trip isn't really working for us, uh, although I'm gonna still work on that. Uh, this is a trip we've always loved. It really is, it makes an adventure out of learning, and it, it really, uh, links to the whole idea. One of the strands for, uh, art education, um, in the standards is, uh, responding, another is connecting. Uh, and it really, uh, is important to be looking at, uh, the work of, of the pros and the masters. Uh, and you can't get a better museum to go to in America than, than the Met.
Well, this, this sounds terrific, and, uh, I think that's also built into part of what. Nationally, we have an Every Student Succeeds Act, the policy that, that we moved to from No Child Left Behind. Foundationally, art was a big part of that, 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 that national policy. So you're doing great work. Obviously, the kids are benefiting tremendously. And, and it is recommended that the school committee, uh, approve this out-of-state travel, um, for the Burlington High, uh, Art Students to travel to the Met, to the Met in New York, uh, either Friday, April twenty-ninth, April eighth, or May sixth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, George.
George, before taking a vote on, on, on the motion to approve the trip, which I'm fairly confident will pass, I just wanted to, just wanted to comment on, on the, um, on the, um, the art that you showed us tonight and the, uh, the students that, that appeared. We spend a lot of time acknowledging and recognizing athletic teams and for their accomplishments and with good cause and, and, uh, for good reason. But, um, I think it's great when things like this are brought to the attention of both the school committee and the public, because, uh, accomplishments by the visual arts and the performing arts departments are just as exciting as the athletic department. Uh, and I know we, as a school community and a school committee, are just as proud of, of their accomplishments as, as we are of, of the, uh, young men and women who are playing in different sports. So, um, I know every year we get the, we get updates on, you know, the Boston Globe, um, art, uh, displays, uh, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure I'm calling it the right name, but, um, with all the gold keys and the silver keys and, and historically, we've always done very well with those type of things. But seeing the things that you showed us tonight, um, I don't recall having a display like that before, and it is very impressive. So, um, kudos to you, kudos to the department, and especially kudos to the kids for what they're doing, because it's just remarkable. And, uh, they should all be very proud of, of their work, and as should you. So thank you very much for that. Are there comments or questions from the board before we vote on the approval for the, uh, New York trip? Martha.
I'm not gonna repeat, but I was gonna say what Mr. Murphy just said. I wanna thank you, Mr. Rakovic, for, the department for running all this. And I wanna thank all the teachers who are quite remarkable in your department, um, as well as other departments, but, um, and, and also congratulate the students who've done just such remarkable work. It's really fantastic. Thank you.
Chris.
Just to pile it on a little bit, um, the, uh, the works you showed us are absolutely beautiful. Thank you.
I agree. They're, they're great students. You know, our students are. Are amazing, amazing. They're wonderful.
Congratulations to all the students.
Unless there's anything else, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, um, out-of-state trip to the, uh, Metropolitan Museum in New York City.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five to zero. Have fun, enjoy the trip.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for figuring out how to make that all work, Bob.
Yeah. Okay, that's items A and B under learning. Uh, item C, school choice, second reading. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, would be the second reading of the school, uh, choice. We typically do a, um, we open a public hearing and then close a public hearing.
Yes, I think you're right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, there may be a change in how we do that, but just in, in case there isn't, would you mind?
Sure. Um, Dr. Conti was referring to the, I believe the statute that permits the, um, this type of, um, out-of-district, uh, school choice requires a public hearing and then a vote by the school committee if the school department wants to adopt the, uh, policy. So, uh, with that in mind, um, take a motion to open a public, public hearing on the discussion of the school choice.
So moved.
Moved in second, so we are, public hearing is open, and if there's any discussion, now's the time.
So again, Mr. Chair, we'll certainly entertain it. I, I believe the way, uh, things have changed is, uh, they want districts to, um, assume they have school choice. So the public hearing and the vote is actually to, um, to deny it. So I, I think the, the vote is in the inverse. So I'm just gonna ask you to take two votes, just in case I'm wrong, if that's, if that's okay. So, um, you're going to be, um, I hope, voting not to exercise school choice in grades K to eight, but exercising school choice, allowing the law to occur, or the, the process to occur in grades nine through twelve in a limited capacity. And then I'm also just gonna ask you to affirmatively vote, um, the, um, the school choice. And I know that's confusing, but, uh, the, this, I believe the state has changed. We were doing some research on that. The, the regulation has changed slightly, so I just wanna make sure I'm covering my bases.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
No. So again, uh, we are recommending, uh, Principal Sol is recommending for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, we continue to offer limited school choice by admitting non-Burlington resident students for a maximum of ten students in grade nine, five students of grade ten, five students of grade eleven, and five students in grade twelve. That's what we've been doing for approximately twelve years. And, um, so I'm gonna recommend that you, uh, continue to support, um, limited school choice, uh, for grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. With one vote.
Is there, is there a motion to that effect to get it on the table before we forget how we said it?
So moved.
Public hearing first.
We will, and, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose so.
We didn't vote to open the public hearing. We just moved it and seconded it.
Okay, so we are open. Does anybody want to say anything under the public hearing concession of it? Carl?
Just a quick question. In the language, it says a maximum of ten in grade nine, five in ten, in grade ten, five in eleven, and five in grade twelve. Do we see that number, or are we bumping against that number at all in, in the, in the twelve years that we've had those numbers?
We haven't.
Okay.
Especially in the last two years. I think that's probably atypical, but we haven't bumped into, haven't bumped into those numbers. And it really depends on the size of the incoming class.
Sure.
Because we just want to make sure we have room for the, for the students.
Right.
And, and then it's also a way for us to help us students as they become more mobile, because if their families move out of Burlington, we can still have them fin, finish their education. And we have a much better chance of having them complete if they don't have to restart their education somewhere else. So we really, having those spots has really allowed us to, I think, better serve some students.
Move we close the public hearing?
Okay, moved and-
Seconded.
Seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed.
Move we-
Go ahead, now we go to a vote.
Move we, what's the wording? Do not?
Um, I, Mrs. Monaco, I think the first motion should just be in the affirmative that recommended school committee approve school, school choice at Burlington High School for ten students in grade nine, five in grade ten, five in grade eleven, and five students in grade twelve for the 2022-2023 school year.
That, so moved.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Martha?
I, I am in support of this motion. I do want to record, put on record that I'm a bit concerned about the school choice program in general. I don't know that it's the best way to set education policy in a state. However, we, the way we use it, I have voted for it every year that I've been on the school committee in the way we use it, just at the high school, when there is room in the, in the class sizes, to allow some flexibility for, as Dr. Conti mentioned, students who may be, whose families may have moved but are still interested in completing their educa, their high school education at Burlington High School. It does seem to be used, but it doesn't seem to be, you know, hitting up against the limits that we've set. And it feels like a reasonable way to use this option that the state has offered us.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, put the motion to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five, zero, zero.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, just the other motion I'd like you to have is to deny the state's school choice program in grades K through eight.
So moved. Second.
Take your pick, Kristen. Surprise us in the minutes.
It's been moved twice and seconded twice to deny the school choice in elementary and middle school. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also passes five to zero.
Thank you. I should have enough votes to really make a mess of this moving forward, so thank you.
You're counting on Kristen to get all that straight.
Ms. Donnie, I'll certainly help, so we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it down.
Okay, moving on. Item D under section six is elementary enrollment. Dr. Conti?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is, again, a relatively short agenda item, mostly informational. So at your desks, I had, I, I, you should have a handout where we have the four elementary schools. We have the incoming kindergarten students that we are, we're aware of. And then we, we provided you the current section count. When I say section, I mean number of homerooms, so the number of homeroom classes per grade. And you can see the numbers of students in those classrooms. And so I just have a few areas of, of concern. And I'm sure that I just wanted to give you some background as we move forward into budget season. First thing that jumped out at me is if you look at the incoming kindergarten number at Francis Wyman. Right now, we have ninety-three students. We have, that's sort of through census data, so we don't have those students registered, but we are going into R.K. registration season currently. We usually start, we don't like to see our numbers full, because we tend to get registrations throughout the summer and into, even into September. So if we're already starting at ninety-three students, and let's say we add twenty students over the summer, that would be a, a bit of a, a bit of a challenge for us. We have other numbers that are favorable. So again, I, I don't have any firm numbers now, but I just think that, um, something to be mindful of. We're having a meeting next week. We're including Lab in that meeting, because also if you look at the overall numbers at Fox Hill, and I'll make sure that the chart has the overall numbers moving forward. And I'm going to do this from memory, so I may be wrong. I think Fox Hill is really only fifteen or twenty students, Patrick, behind Francis Wyman in terms of total number of students. You can see that Fox Hill was really designed as a, as a four-homer building. And you can see we currently have three grades that have five homerooms. And so some of the concern about space at Fox Hill is because we're trying to honor small class sizes, and that's taking up some of the instructional space. I hate to use this word, that redistricting. I just hate to do it, but we are working on a new building. I think that'll alleviate the issue, but the new building is not going to be here for, for, say, six, six or seven years. So we're just looking at that pretty closely. Obviously, if there's any redistricting or any programs moved, we will bring those conver, those decisions back to the, back to the committee. But we really, I think, need to give Fox Hill some relief and probably have some of those students at either Pine Glen or at Memorial. So I just think we're having those conversations. I just wanted to make the committee aware of that. And again, I just want to stress, no decisions have been made, no students are moving, nothing has changed. We're just looking at where we are, and when we go through our kindergarten registration process, we'll see where the balancing is at. And I know this committee has a strong guidance for class sizes at the, at the elementary, at the elementary level. So, so again, I just wanted to give you that early information.
Thank you. Any questions? Martha?
I'm just wondering if portables are being considered.
Ms. Simon, I would certainly consider portable, portables. Fox Hill already has portables. Bob, I'm going to put you on the spot. The, the portable process isn't quick either. That would require lots, lots of planning, design. It's not something we, we could do in a, in a month or two. It really takes a year planning, is that?
Yeah, just with permitting, purchasing, actually getting something here, even if we were to lease it, it's not just readily available. A lot of them either have to be built or come from previous job sites. And there's just a lot of moving parts that don't make them readily available to us quickly.
And then, Ms. Simon, to be honest, they're not always available. It depends actually on if there's a, a bad hurricane or a storm or a forest fire. The, the portables tend to get utilized in that part of the country first. So certainly understanding that. So something we can look at, but not for this coming fall.
Well, given that we're already overcrowded at Fox Hill, I would like to know if it's something we ought to start thinking about for the fall of '23. And if it's going to take a year to plan and design and find the actual portables.
Yes, I'm just not sure the portables would go at Fox Hill. We are, again, we already have portables where they would go. I don't know which school they would go to, and then that would require redistricting. So again, that would be a longer conversation. Again, I just wanted to make sure you have early enrollment data. And if we're committed to class sizes of eighteen on average roughly, then we need the classrooms to support that. So that, that's all. And I'll get you updated information every meeting. And we're beginning to have, again, look at that carefully. We have kindergarten registration coming up. I don't have those exact dates, but I would sort of ask publicly that if you have an entering kindergartner, please make sure that we're aware that you are interested in attending school. The earlier we have that information, the, the better we can plan.
Chris?
Thank you. Eric, it seems to me that the guidance that, that we have had from the school committee has been eighteen to twenty-two, preferably eighteen. But we've gone up to twenty-two without feeling like, I think contractually, you can have twenty-six kids in a class.
Right.
But the school committee took a position quite a while back to keep it between eighteen and twenty-two, unless there's a really unusual circumstance. So if you look at these numbers, they are all between eighteen and twenty-two. At the fifth grade level at Fox Hill, there is one class with twenty-two, and three classes with, well, two with twenty-one and one with twenty. And so that group is moving on to the middle school next year, so that won't be an issue again. And the kindergarten is quite large, the current kindergarten. So I think a lot is going to depend on the kindergarten numbers. If they, if they really soar, like Francis Wyman appears to have soared, then we may be facing the kind of a crunch where you might have to think about things like portable classrooms. But I think if, if we stay within this framework that we're looking at here, we're okay.
Again, I think our overall numbers look okay. I think our over, our overall number of classrooms, but it's really where the students are showing up and what school they're sort of currently assigned to. And we may need to change some of those, some of those assignments. We've also been very fortunate in allowing families to choose the elementary school that they want out of their zone.
Right.
And I don't think I've denied anybody. And it may be the case where we might have a school where if a, a family wants to be in an out-of-zone placement, that we may not be able to accommodate that. So again, just making the committee aware, this was just meant to be a first glance. I don't have any conclusions. It's just, I look at these numbers all the time, and then it certainly impacts our planning, obviously our staffing, and, and hopefully, I, I don't like to redistrict, so hopefully we can make this work, given our current neighborhood assignments.
Thank you.
Anything further on this item? Seeing none?
Yes, I, I'd just like to know if we could share this data on the website, now that we've discussed it. We, I mean, and we should date it, because it does change every week. But I think anybody who's interested could then see what we are seeing.
Ms. Simon, we certainly can. It's public information at this point, so we can date it and put it up. And then we can, I'm, I'm sort of giving a preview to the committee that we're going to be talking about enrollment and class assignments probably in the, in the coming months or so.
Right, and so i, if, as we update it, we should also update whatever's on the website as well. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, moving on to item six E, grade eight transitioning. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just mostly informational. I had some questions, and the committee regularly asked me for where our eighth graders, where our eighth graders go. And so we've given you a, again, added to our historical perspective, really looking at about nine years worth of, worth of information. The percent attending vocational, the percent attending Shawshene, and the percent attending private schools. I think sometimes there's the thinking that we're losing students intro to privates, and that's just not factually correct. We have seen an increase in the number of students attending Shawshene, but we've also seen an increase in the percentage of students who are accepted to, to Shawshene. And we've worked hard with Shawshene to, to make sure our students have that opportunity, if that's what they choose. I always say Burlington High School students have two great high schools to choose from. They have Burlington High School and they have Shawshene Tech. And we just want to make sure that the students who choose that have the opportunity to attend. So we, we are not seeing a mass exodus of, of eighth-grade students out of the district. Our percent attending, applying and attending private schools have, as you can see, have been relatively steady for the last nine or, nine or ten years, so. And we'll continue to track this. We're very interested in, Patrick, you mentioned that to me too, where students go after Burlington and how they do there, if they're successful, why they left, all those, all those type of questions, so.
Chris?
A lot of people have been asking me about this lately, so I'm, I'm glad that you came up with this little chart for us. So the percentage of students that go to private schools has been stable. And the percentage of students going to Shawshene has increased.
Yes.
But that is because we wanted it to increase. You wanted more slots for kids. And I, I think you told me at one point that some of the other communities who have students at Shawshene have new buildings.
Yes, almost all of them.
And so they were probably more intriguing for the kids to stay in their hometown, therefore opening up more positions at Shawshene?
Yes, so, yes. Tucksbury High School's relatively new, Wilmington High School's new, Borica High School is new, and Bedford High School is relatively new. So I think those are the five districts in the Keshman area. Mrs. Monaco, we also have had a higher percentage of our students accepted into Shawshene. So I think we've worked hard with the Shawshene admissions department. I hate even calling it that, the guidance department. We've have our sixth graders visiting there. We've really approached this as a partnership. We allow Shawshene into our middle school. There are districts that don't allow Shawshene in for some reason. So we're looking for the best placement for our eighth-grade students and really want them interested. If they are interested in a vocational education, for that interest to start as early as possible. So I, again, what I'm saying is I don't see more students going to Shawshene as a problem. I think it's, if it's the right fit, it's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
And if people are concerned about where our eighth graders are going, we have seen a higher percentage of students accepted and matriculating, again, a college word, to vocational school. We have not seen a higher percentage or more students leaving for private schools.
Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't expect you to have this data off the top of your head, but just anecdotally, are there students that go to Shawshene, find out that it's not a good fit, and then end up back at, at the high school here?
Yes, Mr. Fossa, and actually do have that data, and I will share that with you moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Anything else on this issue? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six F, special instructional program and accommodation policy, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was, again, we, we had two policy suggestions for, for this month. One, we'll be discussing in executive session. This policy is a first reading. And, and it was, it's policy IHB, and I spoke to the Massachusetts Association of School Boards. The question that came in was, do we have a policy, a school committee policy that supports child find? Child find is a legal requirement that we have to go out and seek students over the age of three to see if they are needing of support services in, in regards to a disability. While our materials indicate that we follow the law, which we do, the school, school boards, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has a policy that I wanted to present to the school committee as a first reading that is- that essentially creates a school committee policy that says the same thing, that the school district will follow the child find law. So that's the intention of this policy. Again, in our materials, it says the same thing, but it doesn't have the weight of a school committee policy behind it. So I don't believe any of the school materials will change. All that we will do is overlay our school materials with a school committee policy as recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I'm saying that is my intention here, and if you would look at that in a second reading. You can certainly add language, if you'd like to add language. But this is the policy as drafted by MASC.
Okay, so this is the first reading. We can certainly discuss it tonight, but we will be voting it at the next meeting. Chris.
In this policy, it doesn't mention child find. Can we somehow associate it with the child find law? Are there a whole bunch of different laws that it's referring to?
Mrs. Monaco, I need to ask that question again. When I asked the Association of School Committees, I asked, is there a policy that...
Covers child find.
Covers child find. This is the language that they provided for me, and they said, you just have to follow the law. So I said...
It does reference Mass General Laws, chapter seventy-one B, which is probably the pertinent.
We can find a place to add in child find. That would be clearer, is that, I can look for that? I think we can do that without changing the content at all.
And also, I know some of the parents, the CPAC parents, would like to see this policy. I didn't want to share anything because we hadn't had a school committee meeting, but I was asked if we could see the details of the policy.
One hundred percent, between now and the first reading, we'll gladly share it, and we can make it available.
All right, thank you.
And again, I just want to say, we are not the author of this. This comes from MASC, from their model policy manual.
Martha.
I had similar thoughts when reading it, that it was not very specific and didn't mention, you know, the laws, although it does specify at the bottom what the legal references are. So that may cover us. I mean, the sentence also says, "The requirements of law and regulation will be followed in the identification of children with special needs, in referrals for their evaluation, in prescribing for them suitable programs, and in assessing their educational progress." And so it sort of lays it out in narrative, but it did feel sort of lacking in specificity if the point of this is to follow the law. And so I'm just wondering, would it be helpful to, I know we have legal counsel for the Special Education Department, would it make sense for them to take a quick look? I mean, I'm a little torn because I know that MASC, that we got this policy from, does a pretty good job with this stuff. But would it make sense for us to have our legal counsel look at it? Plus, and now, of course, if people, if anyone from the community wanted to give us feedback, that would be okay too.
Yeah, I mean, I have no objection to that, but I would, as you just pointed out, this came from MASC. My guess is the high percentage of the school districts across the state have this particular policy. So there might be reasons that it was written in such a way, given the, how that area of education, there's many different ways things could go and variations of different disabilities and whatnot. So there might be a reason that it might not be as specific as you might like.
It might cover a whole bunch of different aspects.
And I do trust the MASC, I think they do a good job. So that's what I was saying, I'm kind of torn, but...
No, and again...
Tom, not all.
No, we can certainly do that. I just think this respectfully, when we do policy work with this committee, we often end up rewriting the law. And your policies end up looking exactly like the law. And we don't have, our policy manual, your policy manual, doesn't need to have the legal language in it. You just need to say you support the legal language, and then we can reference to that. So Ms. Simon, Ms. Monaco, we will look at adding child find. I asked that question specifically. I said, is there a school committee policy? Because I believe that was the question. Is there something in your policy manual? This is the language that essentially says you follow IDEAIA, which includes the child find. And so we can, we can maybe, I'll ask Tom if other districts have other, sort of an introduction or a paragraph saying that. I don't believe you need to include IDEAIA in your policy manual.
All right, thank you.
Carol.
Dr. Conti, you mentioned that this would be an overlay, and this is something, these laws are what the district is doing already. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a spot, or where could, if we wanted to look at what the district policies, separate from the school committee policies are, is there a place that we can find that?
Yes, I can provide that to you as well. It's on the district website, under the Special Education heading. It talks about how we contact and communicate with local pediatricians and sort of what our child find process is. So I will connect you with that language as well. And maybe we can link it here to the policy manual. All I'm saying is, with or without the school committee policy, we're required to follow the law. The policy basically gives your imprimatur on our following the law. So I think, and again, I think it's important to do, MASC has this language, and I think you all can adopt it. It's not going to change our practice, is sort of what I'm trying to say, and also saying that we are following the law already.
Thanks.
Chris.
Eric, I checked with Woburn, and they do exactly the same thing we do as far as the, how they go about locating the children.
Okay. Thank you.
Same list of how they go about it.
Okay.
Okay, so if anybody has any comments, questions, potential changes, modifications, whatever.
That Carl know.
We'll be voting this at our next meeting, and anybody... Oh, I'm sorry. Is, you got a name, Bob?
Yeah, Beth Colburn, on the WebEx meeting, would like to comment.
Hi, Beth, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Beth Colburn with the CPAC. I just wanted to, forgive me, I haven't seen the policy, but I guess I'm wondering why you would create a policy that just says you'll follow the law without outlining what you're doing to comply with the law? Like, my understanding is the reason of having a policy would be to kind of outline that detail a little bit clearer. Maybe someone could help me understand that?
Miss Colburn, our policies don't always have the procedures.
Have the procedures that follow it. The procedures would be in a procedure manual, maybe in another piece of district documentation, like a special ed plan. I think our policies tend to just sort of state the kind of overarching values and requirements of the school committee. So there are many examples where our policies aren't as detailed as the practices that are in place. We could certainly link that information to this policy, or we could figure out how to connect them. But if we were to include all of the procedures that we follow in relation to policies, the policies would be very, would be long.
I would just echo that, Beth. If you looked at our policy manual, some of them are literally three or four lines long. But then there were administrative practices and procedures that are adopted by the various departments that are implementing the policies that go into the type of detail that you'd probably want to see.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also add to the chair that if we explain what the policy is and the proceed, let's say the law changes, the policy can still cover that we are going to follow the laws and the regulations without us having to revote it. So it is, policies don't tend to have that level of detail.
Okay, was that it, Beth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the first reading? We will revisit this in the next meeting. Before moving on, Patrick, do we have an update on the final score?
I think the final was sixty-one to fifty-eight, but we won by three, yeah. Friday night, not sure who we're playing yet. Possibility of Drakehead, I guess, which would bring a big crowd, I'm sure. Then it's a Western Mass team that was the other.
Long Meadows, yeah, spring forward.
Well, so the game is this Friday at home?
Correct. We're the number three seed, so we were guaranteed home games through the quarterfinals. So this is the quarterfinals. If we can win this one, we'll be on to a neutral site for the semifinals.
Thank you. All right, item seven, equity. Hey, let's talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Porch and Mr. Larkin.
So the next session of Let's Talk About It is on the calendar for Wednesday, the sixteenth of March. Patrick can talk a little bit more about the agenda itself, but I did want to highlight that now that we're having some more in-person time, that's been elevated. Folks have been emailing and saying, you know, can we get together? Can we get together? We are trying to see what numbers look like on that. We would probably think about the cafeteria in high school and obviously moving the time because it's late. You know, it's convenient to be virtual because folks can make that, but we would have to move the time up some. And I don't know what that would mean for folks, but that's something we're talking about. But in terms of what's going to be on the agenda, I'm going to pass the mic.
Thanks. Before we get to that part, I just want to remind people, and we'll put this out in different locations. One of the practices we've had is to email everybody that showed up to a previous session to let them know that there's another session coming. And you don't have to have been at a previous session, it could be your first time coming. It's all great. But there's a bit.ly backslash Let's Talk Burlington gets you to a registration form. So we'll definitely be virtual for our March meeting. There's one more in May. As Mr. Porch said, we'd love to do that. Or we'd like to have, get feedback from people, what's their preference. But definitely, from our work, doing this equity work with staff and as a leadership team, just to be able to be in the same space with people and have conversations. And I was talking to Mrs. Bond about this too, with her work. It's just, it's totally different, obviously. We've talked about virtual schooling versus in-person, and with this work, same thing. There's a lot more value if we can be in the same space with people. So I think it's been a few months since we left off. We did have a gap, given the way that the year runs. And we're going to continue to look at, you know, I think we left off with willing to be disturbed in our last conversation, and we're going to pick up on that a little bit more. And obviously, there's some local topics, there's some local equity topics that are causing people to feel a little disturbed. And we're just going to talk about that and how to process that as an individual when there's talks about change. And people can ask questions, ask for clarifications about what we mean when we say certain things. And it's just, honestly, it's meant to be a space where people come and we can have agree to disagree on topic, and it's okay. That's how the real world works, and that's how we're going to move forward with this work. But again, just to go back to what the purpose of this program is, it's to talk transparently about the topics that we're talking about as a leadership team, with teachers and professional development. And we're having conversations with our high school students that meet with us after school as the DEI student group. So we just want to let people have an opportunity to be involved in those types of opportunities that we're doing as a group inside the school, so they can see, they can talk to their neighbors and their friends. And there's, again, it's full transparency about what we're trying to do, and it's really to get better at difficult conversations around race and equity, which are a struggle for people, particularly in a white, in a majority-white community. It's hard. It's hard because it's change, and there's fear involved, and we're going to work through those fears, and it's going to be okay. So we're excited for the next session.
What time on Wednesday, the sixteenth, is that?
Seven to eight-thirty.
And it's virtual?
Yeah, virtual, definitely virtual next week.
Thank you, Patrick. Questions, comments about the next session?
So not specifically about the next, Let's Talk About It, but about a year ago, the school committee participated in a workshop on equity and came up, I thought, with a pretty straightforward equity statement for the district and for ourselves. And I really, we had talked about doing it sort of regularly, and to me, once a year is about as minimum of a regularly as we could do. So I'd like to ask the committee if people are willing to participate in another session like that.
Can I, can I just, again, I just want to clarify, this is through the chair, if I may?
Sure.
So the MASC anti-racism statement that the committee adopted was a commitment to doing that work annually as a school committee. So I just want to, if you read the language, I just want to reference that.
Ms. Simon, we'll certainly work on some scheduling. I think we had talked about that previously, so we'll get some dates to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, the next item under this section is the Equity Audit Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to give the Equity Audit Update. We had our first in-person introduction to the update. We're starting the data gathering phase of this. Dr. Hayden Frederick Clark from Black Print, which is the company that is doing the audit, visited with some of the central office leadership team. Mr. Murphy, you were kind enough to join us. It was about a two-hour presentation, really focusing on the why. And the reason I sort of want to start with the why in addition to what we discussed is I'd just like to, again, read the school committee's equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child individual. And so that is the committee's equity statement. We've gone over several things this evening in the agenda where we're gathering information. We talked about enrollment, we're gathering data, we talked about where our eighth graders go. This audit is much of the same thing. So there was a conversation today with the Joint Labor Management Group. I just want to state publicly, this has nothing to do with teacher evaluation or the evaluation process. This is really about the organization. So if it helps, I'd just like people to think of the equity statement of the committee and that word thriving. I would call this just a thriving audit. We're going to see who is thriving. We want everyone to thrive, and we have, I think, great examples. You saw some today in the art department where you have kids thriving. But we also want to see if there are areas where we can improve. And it's like any audit. And I would say that we all have blind spots, and I'm guilty as everyone else. And this is really to help me find my blind spots in the organization and to help us address that. So it's agenda-less, it's really, it's going to be information that I think is important. The hard work will come actually as a result of the audit. When we say, okay, we have areas that we can improve, thriving, how do we do that? And how do we go about both the technical aspects of that? Maybe changing a policy, maybe changing a practice, as well as the more cultural aspects or the, I think the language they use is adaptive, which is how do we change our mindset? And how do we think about it differently? So equity is being, as a word, is being sort of co-opted in a lot of different ways. So just think of this as how all kids are successful. We're just looking at how they experience the organization in many different, in many different ways. And I think it'll show both highlights and show, like any audit, and show areas where we can improve. So that's it. So we're going to, we have three other training sessions where we're going to be looking at the sort of the how and the why and sort of learning about some of the language, so that we're all using common language and understanding why we're going about doing this. I think, I don't think, I know that they're also providing an open forum, a preliminary town hall on Thursday, March tenth. When I say they, that is Black Print. And the public, anyone is welcome, and that's between six-thirty and nine. And we will publicize that. If we haven't sent it to you, I'll make sure that I do send it to you. But we will post it on the website. We will send it out to anyone who wants to come. It's been sent. So, um, we will, um, make sure that we, uh, we promote that. And again, this is not, um, this, this is just a, a way of looking at the district through a different lens. I've been here now close to fourteen years, um, and I need to see things differently. And again, we want all kids to, uh, to thrive. So again, to the, um, this has nothing to do with individual, um, again, individual teachers. This is not a teacher evaluation process. This is really about, um, uh, the access and outcomes that, uh, all of our kids experience and really trying to make sure that, uh, we are, um, operationalizing your equity statement, which really asks us to make sure that everyone's thriving. So we, we wanna make sure we can answer that question for you.
Clarification, this Thursday is, is that virtual or is that at, actually at the high school? I mean, at the town hall?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is virtual. And there will be additional town halls. Uh, you should have received it a moment ago.
Okay.
And I believe you were asking for that information, Ms. Monaco. So Patrick is sending it to you now.
Okay.
But this was sent out to the district as well. And so on the heels of this, there will be additional town halls. It is also another great way for this firm to, to, to capture some data, um, as well. So that will be coming out, um, but this one is already out, but they'll have additional ones. So if folks can't make this one, please assure them that there will be others. We just wanted to make sure we could translate and get that on the flyer as well. We don't wanna send out, you know, flyers without translating to our, to our, you know, our different languages as well.
And this will be conducted by Black Print?
Yes, correct.
For the, for the record and for anybody out there who, especially if you're available, um, Dr. Frederick Clark was outstanding. I mean, he was just fantastic. And, um, if he's the one doing the presenting on Thursday, I would certainly encourage anybody who can to tune in because it's, um, it'll be a very informative presentation, but also it's very well presented. So, I, I hope, I hope we get a big crowd for it. Uh, Martha?
I'm, I'm, I'm not even sure what to say. It's two days before this very important thing and the school committee just found out about it. This is really important. I'm delighted that it's happening, but I'm a little flabbergasted, I guess, is the old-fashioned word. You say there's gonna be more of them. So I, you know, it, I have two other things that night, uh, but this is a really top priority for me. And I just, it, so can you explain better to me what's gonna happen? At, it, what's a town hall mean? Is this a presentation? Is it a opportunity for people to share their thoughts? Is it, when you say it's gonna be ongoing, is it gonna be ongoing because there'll be different opportunities? So different people can come at different times? I, I'm, I need more information.
So, so I'll, I'll.
What? I have not seen anything about it tonight. It's the first time I've heard about it. And I don't know who you sent, you said you already sent it out?
No, I, again, that, the, the email not being sent, again, is, is on me. I apologize that, to that. I think the focus of the town hall, um, initially was really meant to be a, um, to get our internal folks comfortable with what is going to happen. We just didn't want to, um, have anyone believe that we are restricting access to anyone. This isn't a top secret, anything.
Mm-huh.
I think what Mr. Porch was saying is there will be more opportunities, um, for, um, other groups to be involved. So the, the, um, the organization, all of our educators, actually all of our employees have been notified, uh, Ms. Simon. We're just sort of, uh, bringing this to you that the, the project, the, the audit is really beginning in earnest, really this week with the kickoff in person and they're going to be doing this. We have some people who have expressed some concern and some fears about what are they looking at?
Mm-huh.
And I think this is really meant to help that. I didn't wanna put words in your mouth, but, but if that's, uh, I think that was the intention, is to really do it internally and then get out to the, um, outside the organization. But we didn't want anyone to think they couldn't participate.
So on Monday, this was sent to families as well through Aspen. And I think we've got twenty-five or thirty people who, who's since registered to attend. The other thing I would add about the audit is this, um, you know, you know, the state has done audits here. You know, folks have gone through audit process in different ways. And I understand the equity word is a little scary for people. What I, what I would add is that an audit is an examination. So if you, like, have appointment to go to the doctor, you're gonna be a little nervous about what the doctor's gonna say. I think Dr. Conti summarized it well. And I, and I, and I guess for me, um, I start to wonder a little bit about the why. That the word equity makes people so uncomfortable, if I'm being honest. And the reality is, um, this, this process isn't any different than when Desi comes in or anybody else. And so I would ask, I would ask us to, like, be reflective about why this one, the, the ask or the expectation is different than those situations. And that's an internal question that folks need to answer for themselves. Because what, what you, what a person who sits and listens hears is that this is somehow other than that. And so my question would be why? I can't answer that, and I just wanna name that because that's important if we're gonna grow together. That said, I think, um, this particular town hall is gonna be virtual, but what we're asking Black Print to do is to be in-person for others. Because I think it matters, as, as the chair spoke, when folks are in front of you, it does create a different sense of communication and, um, allow people to connect differently. There will be others, but this firm also wants to be sensitive to the community and in, inquire what makes sense for people. Does it make sense to, to schedule things that people can't make? So, again, I just wanna be clear that there, this firm is trying to work with our district and the distinct needs that it has, in a technical way, as well as where we are in the work. And they've been great that way.
So if I could follow up, I still don't really know what, I think, I know, I, I, I need things to be really explicit. What I think I'm hearing is that I, I, that the, uh, equity audit has begun, that there was some kind of meeting on Monday with staff, um, which is great. I don't need to be at that. I don't need to know every day that those happen. And yet, so this next one, I'm not sure what this next one's for. I, is it just a continuation of the process with the staff? But rather than have it be closed to staff, it's been open to, the, I, I don't, I don't understand. I'm sorry.
So let me make it real simple. The town hall is not a part of the equity audit.
Okay.
Is that it, it's an addition to. The audit doesn't require that you have a town hall.
Okay.
If I, if I could just be real concrete with you. So the purpose in us asking for this, this step or asking or having a conversation about this step is to alleviate that the anxiety that this community is experiencing at very, very high levels, Ms. Simon. So the, so, so let me help you with that. So the point of the town hall is for folks to be able to come and hear about the process that is the equity audit. So that's the point. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the point. There will be additional time for people to do that as well, Ms. Simon. And we're, and the firm is trying to work with folks here in order to coordinate those. So to your point about unique concrete, I think that's the term that you used.
Yeah.
So concrete will come with collaboration because we, we don't want, this firm didn't want to not be considerate of the people in this community. So you don't have to be worried about having an opportunity because, as you said, I think your words were, this is important to you. So we will be honoring that in our communication with this firm, um, to make sure that we create additional opportunities for the, the, the process to be talked about. So that's the purpose of the town hall. Is that, is that cleared up for you?
If I can try to say it back to make sure I understand that
Sure.
this, uh, town hall process is one part of what this firm is offering to the town as a way to help people learn, who are not in the school district, who, to learn about what the process is.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. I think that's good. And now I know what it is.
Sure.
And you're saying that the firm will offer other opportunities for community members to, to ask questions or learn about. So that it'll be more like a presentation of what's the audit will do in this case. Does that sound right? Okay. Thank you. I feel much, we're.
I just, I just wanna clarify again. So it did go to all families on Monday and, and with translations through the Aspen email. So families should have this information. And, um, I know it's new, but it's like, I don't, like, one of the things I would make an analogy with is like the N E Ask accreditation process, um, is a pretty comprehensive process. And as a high, former high school principal, it gets, you know, you're a principal in the building and you know these people are coming in to evaluate your district. It can be, you know, you wanna, you wanna do the right thing when they're in the building. But again, um, I'm also like wondering why, you know, this is something that's been on it. We've talked about it in our district improvement plan for multiple years, doing an equity audit. It's here and I know people are asking questions, so we wanna answer them. So the town hall is that, is that format and one will not cover it, we're sure of that. You know, so, um, so again, uh, appreciate the fact that it didn't get to you in the email. So that was a shortcoming on our part. But there'll be, there'll be plenty of opportunities. People can call me directly if they have questions that they want answered or email me. And I'm sure Ray's available as well, but, um, it's, it's gonna be, it's a new thing, so I get it. But people just be patient, ask the questions, we'll make sure they get answered. And, um, we look forward to the results, um, during the summer and the fall.
And also, uh, could you share that email with me and I?
My email?
The email that you sent to the families?
It's a flyer, yeah, I'll share.
Oh, the flyer then? Okay. Thank you.
Christine.
Oh, you got it.
I just wanna add to the confusion. First of all, thank you for that explanation. Now I know what Thursday night is. But I'm sitting here feeling very conflicted because, um, I have a prior engagement on, not Thursday, but next Wednesday. And I really hate to miss the Let's Talk About It. I've been to all of them and I hate to miss it. So I'm sitting here feeling bad, but I'm not gonna be able to make it. Okay.
And I feel the same because I'm gonna be on an airplane next Wednesday. And I was on an airplane the last time and I missed the one before that because of a, a work conflict too. And I feel really bad and I, I don't know if it's changing it to another night, you know, or, I don't know what to do at this point because I really wanna be a part of it and I, I haven't been able to.
I think you can speak.
I didn't know it was recorded.
Yeah.
They're all recorded so far, yeah.
All right, thank you.
But it's missing the participation part. You know, that's the, you know what I'm saying? That's the part that you kinda missed out on.
If you speak to the pilot, I'm sure they'll hold the plane for you.
Yeah. The water almost went halfway across the room on that one.
But we're gonna set a time so we can all get together and do our own equity conversation, right?
Okay, are there any other questions or comments regarding, um, the Equity Audit Update? Seeing none, let's move on to item eight, under Culture and Relationship slash Thriving, COVID Update. Dr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick's gonna help us out with, with the COVID update.
Sure. Share a few things and if there's questions in general about, you know, things, how they're going in the schools. I know, uh, we're getting back into the elementary cafeterias. So I know I, I was in one of the schools today and the cafeteria staff was, felt like the weight of the world was lifted off their shoulders because kids are coming back down. And they were doing a lot of work to get meals packaged up and delivered and so forth in them. So it's nice to get back to, uh, some of our previous routines, um, that make people a little bit more comfortable. I just, I wanted to give, like, a concrete, uh, portion of this is just on COVID cases because, um, just people are probably wondering. We had nineteen, um, cases the week before February vacation. Last week, we had twenty-two. So it's a slight uptick and, um, sixteen students, six staff last week positive. And this week so far, we have nine student cases in the district. So if that trend continues, we'll be around the same number. So I know the, some of the families were said, you know, why are we taking masks off when we come back after vacation? I'm not arguing, that was one of the questions we got. And, uh, I get it because that's been our previous experience. You come back from a break of some sort and everybody's been interacting with maybe some different people or traveling and, um, that you'd see an uptick. So we didn't see that initially, like, we'll keep an eye on this week. If we see anything, obviously, that's, uh, drastically changing, we'll not only let you know. We'll be talking about it on our Friday updates with families as well. And again, there was one, I just wanna highlight this as well for families that may be listening. I know, um, Fox Hill had some cases in the same classroom. So we, what we did in that case is we communicated with all the families in that classroom to let them know that we've had multiple cases in that classroom this week. Encouraged them to wear masks if they would like to, given what was going on. Certainly, we're staying with the optional mask routine at this point. So that's, we're communicating with families if there's a blip like that where we see and it's, we've seen the same things in the past with a flu bug that spreads, flu bug that spreads through a class. So, um, again, well, if anything's, um, if people have questions, they, again, I would encourage them to reach out to their, their school, their principal. But we're, we're gonna let families know if we see, see anything, um, new, especially given that, you know, we're all unmasked and so forth. So, um, that's, that's the big, the big changes from our end. Again, we'll, I'll try to, um, I'll make sure that maybe we'll do this whole overview again in our Friday update because I'm, I'm guessing not everybody watches the school committee meetings, but we get a lot of views of our Friday updates. It's highly rated. So, so I'll, I'll make sure that. I'll make su, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that we do this so everybody gets the same information, what's happened the week before vacation and the last couple of weeks since we're back with COVID numbers, in case there's questions. And encourage people to reach out if they have more questions or concerns.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Martha?
I just wanted to clarify, what did you say this week? There were nine cases?
As of right now, there's nine positive student cases in the district.
Tuesday, since, as of Tuesday of this week?
Since today. Monday, Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday.
We have, we've been informed of nine positive cases.
Right. Okay. And if, I have something that's sort of COVID-related, but I don't know if other people have questions.
I just wanted to say, I know that in general, though, Middlesex County is a low-risk area, which I think people should know too. That helps a lot.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
If not, I, I, I was actually gonna ask this question, but I saw earlier at the basketball game, I saw Chrissy Concepcion, who's our Director of Mental Health. And I just wanted to report what I heard from her, which is, and, and one of the, the problems with COVID is all of the emotional stress and social, emotional issues. And, um, it, it, you know, because we can't cover everything that's going on in the district, every meeting, I was wondering if we are back to doing the screenings. The Des, it was called DESA, was a, 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 the name of the screener. Um, and what it meant was it, that teachers in the elementary level and students at the high school were self-reporting about, are there concerns about every single child? And they were, um, we are doing those again at K to five. We are doing, uh, the teachers are kind of checking in around whether there are students who have a, a, a need right away. The high school students are doing the self-evaluation. And this, this DESA screening tool does not have something right now for the middle school level. So, uh, what Ms. Concepcion said was she's working on that and trying to make sure we get something for the middle school as well. And in the meantime, we are still continuing that we do have, just as we have tiered instruction for academics, for math and N E L A, that we have this social, emotional learning tiered supports. And that is continuing at all levels. So I, I did get that update, so I wanted to share it. Because I, you know, it's not just about COVID, but it's certainly, COVID has made everything much more stressful for all of us. So I was glad to hear that that's back and running and up and going and, and that Ms. Concepcion's on top of trying to make sure we get it going again at the highs, at the middle school level.
Uh, again, Mr. Chair, um, through the chair, um, Ms. Concepcion, uh, Mrs. Concepcion did a presentation at the middle school for their P T O, um, last week. And I think she's willing to do a version of that, um, for the school committee. We're just trying to schedule it and it is budget time. So we'll, we will fit it in. And, um, and again, so I, I think she's, um, ready and prepared to, to do that. We did commit to having our elementary principals, um, at our, not at next week's meeting, which is purely a budget meeting, but at our regularly scheduled business meeting. but at our regularly scheduled business meeting. They were canceled from January, if you remember, because we had the Omicron outbreak at that time. So they would come in and talk about elementary schools because they were previously scheduled to do so. You've heard from Deb Clark, you heard from Carrie Purchase, you heard from Mark Sullivan, and you'll hear from the elementary principals. And then we can bring Ms. Concepcion in after that.
Sure. All right. Moving on, facilities and finance, the Fox Hill School Building Committee, standing agenda item, Mr. Kuna.
Thank you to the chair. I think first and foremost, I want to thank Town Meeting and its members. Warrant Article 11, they supported by majority. So again, thank you for that. As you all remember, we asked for an extension because of the delay of Town Meeting. So part of our remaining checklist items on, is the local vote authorization, which I have tonight. I will need to get a signature from the chair, Mr. Murphy, you know, after this meeting. And I also need to send in our certified enrollment. So again, MSBA has presented the school with their enrollment projections and also a three and four school option. So again, that needs to be signed off and then sent into MSBA. The plan after that, of course, would be is for MSBA to put us on either their next board meeting in April or in May. We don't have that date yet because our information hasn't been submitted, but tomorrow, by the end of the week, I will submit that. Again, our extension is March twenty eighth, so we have about twenty days left to get the two pieces of information in. We haven't had an SBC meeting in a while, so I'm not sure if the board is actually recommending that we set one up or if we wait to see once we're scheduled for SBC or a, sorry, an MSBA board meeting to then schedule an SBC meeting. But that's all the information I have right now.
Questions or comments, Chris?
Just a quick question, Bob. The two options that they're looking at, working with us on are a three grade per class and a
Five.
five grade per class. Okay. So I, I thought I heard you say three and four and I got confused.
My apologies. Yeah, the confusion that I put on the table would be a three and four school option for the district.
Oh, I get it. Okay. But so, but three grades, I mean, three classes versus five classes. I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Martha?
I don't know that it makes sense for the school building committee to meet before the MSBA takes their next vote. But I think it would be good to start scheduling it now. It, it, it's how, it's not halfway through. I mean, it might be a month away, but everybody's got these busy schedules. So I would like to request that you try to schedule something maybe for the first week in April. I don't, you know, that, I think it'd be better to have a meeting on the books, assuming that they're going to vote to include us. But whatever, it's hard to know with them. But I think it'd be good to try to schedule something sooner than later. And there actually are two Tuesday nights that we don't have a school committee meeting, you know, the twenty-ninth and the fifth and stuff. So we, I mean, you should look into it, but I would like to see it. I think it is a long process, but I think we need to, if they say yes, we need to get going. And I, I definitely will share that, I know I just spoke with Mr. Kuna last week, that assuming that we go forward with this process, I'm hoping that we'll be able to visit some other schools that have built new schools recently with MSBA or even without, to get ideas for what, you know, we can do to create a healthy, energy efficient schools for our children that are good educational environments and sustainable. So I'm hoping that we can do that as well. Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Thank you. Is that, and that's all you had, Bob? Okay. Next up is superintendent's budget, budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You all emailed the budget earlier today. It's in electronic form. This is really the baseline document. I want to make sure I thank Nicole. As you can see, it's a, it's a two hundred and twenty-five plus pages. It's, it's, it is very detailed. In the coming weeks, we will be going through all of it. So, and I think everything is, is linked. And the last page is a summary of the new positions requested at the class center or the building level. So when we go through those, that particular building, the principals will be here and explain to you why they're requesting the positions that they are requesting. We are over now, as we typically are over. So Nicole, if you want to just go over some of the rough numbers and some of the formatting, I know Roger's on the call and then we're, we have some other meetings set up, but just wanted to start with the thank you. So thank you for putting all this, putting all this together. I think Nicole gets suggestions from about seventy-five people and makes sense of it all. So thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead, Nicole. Thanks.
So I know Dr. Conde thanked me, but I just want to make sure that we recognize Liz Mullinmonte as our analyst because she put a ton of hard work into making this document possible also. So thank you to Liz. So I think Eric did a, Dr. Conde did a good job summarizing sort of the basics there. The additional position requests are all included in the number that you see in the summaries. The additional positions, there's a chart in the, in the end of it, in the end of the document that shows all of those positions in the rationales for, for the request. And then also within each of the buildings, personnel, budget detail, those positions are, are included in there and they're highlighted in blue for new positions. You'll also notice that there's some green highlighted. Those are our grant funded positions. So we're still showing that that position exists, but you'll notice that in the, in the far right column, the FTE and the, the salary amount does, does not get included in the operating budget for the, for the grant funded ones.
Excuse me, can you say what page you're on?
Well, it's multiple pages.
I think she's just talking generally right now.
Just in general.
Okay. So, okay.
Think again, Nicole, just said, in general, the grant funded positions are highlighted.
Okay.
Are highlighted in, in green.
Grant funded in green. Okay.
And those salaries, Ms. Simon, don't contribute to the overall, they're not included in the overall operating budget.
Good. Okay. And the blue ones, I heard you.
Are the newly requested positions.
Newly requ, okay. Good. Thank you.
Of course. Also included in this, in the budget document are the funds that are earmarked to settle, settle contracts. So the teacher's contract obviously being the largest, as well as the administrators association and any non-union personnel individual contracts. So with all of these included, we're currently coming in at four point one eight percent. The guideline for, for twenty-three is three point seven five. So it's about a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar in cuts that we'd need to make to come in at that three point seven five guideline. And just beginning the next meeting, we'll have all the departments start to come for the committee to jump into further detail.
And all of this, again, in a backdrop, and we believe, our hope is that it will settle soon. We have the uncertainty of the, the teacher's contract being unsettled. So we're trying to project and predict those costs as well in, in the budget. But it's really hard for us to be certain without the, without the contract being determined. So I think you all are aware of that. So that's the well card. And Mr. Riggs, again, I know you're out there. We, we've, we've done, gone through the budget process before with an unsettled contract. And again, our intention is to try to get through that process and have the budget accommodate for, for the, for the agreement.
Chris?
Nicole, the green ones that, that you have as grant funded, are some of those the, the COVID money?
Yes.
Is that the grant?
No, we also have some of our entitlement grants that we, we get every year also.
Okay. So it's a mixed bag?
Correct.
And how long does the COVID money last?
So we have three, three COVID grant, relief grants that are still ongoing. They have different expiration dates.
So they don't all expire at the end of one year?
Right.
Okay. How, what's the latest?
So I think we'd have another, another two years before those funds would be, would need to be fully spent.
Okay. Is, is, is the amount limited per year?
No.
So if you have money left at the end of this year, can you keep it or do you have to give it to the town?
No, we keep it until, until the.
Until you spend it?
Until the grant's expired.
Okay. I'm sure it will.
And Dwight, we have a budget meeting next Tuesday, did I hear? A school committee meeting?
Uh, we have a special school committee scheduled that was part of the budget calendar next Tuesday.
Seven.
At seven o'clock. And again, it's not a full agenda. It'll just be, we'll, we'll get out the agenda, but it'll just be budget. So that's what we'll start to work through. And then Roger sent Nicole dates for the, again, for the Ways and Means Subcommittee. So, so we have the, we have those dates in the budget process as well. And.
Did, did Roger and his committee get a, a copy of what we received?
Yes, and it's getting posted to the, the website tomorrow.
Roger, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Uh, no, I just wanted to thank Nicole and everybody who worked on the budget to get, putting it together. With respect to the grants, Nicole, could we get a list of all the grants and the positions? Because I know not all the amounts actually show, in the sources, they don't show up in the operating budget for obvious reasons. But other Ways and Means members and I are sort of interested in knowing what that pot of, those pots of money are and where they go. So that would be appreciated when we meet. And yeah, we set up, I set up two meetings for, in March with this education Subcommittee and to meet with Nicole and then other, the school committee Subcommittee, talk about budget questions. We'll probably need a couple of meetings in April as well, but I haven't put dates on those yet.
Thanks, Roger. Anybody have any questions before you either Nicole or Roger? Carol?
Those Ways and Means Committee meetings, were they part of that budget, the whole budget schedule that you had sent to us a while back?
No.
No, these are the Subcommittee meetings that tend, they tend to get.
I was just trying to find them.
The last minute.
I'll, I'll update, the original listed, I'll open out, had some optimistic dates for the, for the Ways and Means Subcommittee meetings. Those had to be revised. So I think if you find the original document, they're out of date. Yeah, the current meetings are scheduled for the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. We can send you the details.
Thank you.
At six, at six o'clock, Roger?
Yes.
Six o'clock. Virtual. Let's start out with virtual. I'd like to do some impression ones in April, but virtual is very convenient.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Conde, on this matter before we?
No.
Good. All right. Next item, item C under this agenda item is the monthly financial update.
I, actually, Mr. Chair, I lied. You guys could just, you should just vote to adopt the budget tonight. Just go ahead.
I move.
Ah, yeah, I know. So, sorry.
Monthly financial update. Is that Nicole?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Thanks. So we have the revolving fund summary. As you can see, all of the accounts are in good standing. I know that the last time that we did an update, I forget who, who had asked, but about, about school lunch. So I had touched base with Karen DeBasso, our food service director, and she said that we, we have been seeing a large increase in participation. So that's partially due to what is helping out the balance of, of that fund. And also the reimbursement rate has increased, I believe it was twenty, twenty-four point five cents per meal. So the combination of those two is, is what's helping to keep that account healthy this year. And also I think the other account that we typically look to is Sprouts. And where the balance is a little bit inflated. I, I dug a little deeper into that account. And it looks like we're just waiting for two months of health insurance transfer expenses to hit that account. So about seventeen thousand more in expenses there, but still, still okay in that account.
Thank you. Questions? Carol?
Not a question, just a, some kudos to Ms. Kosh. Thank you. You always make these summaries very easy to read. And I wanted to say earlier on the budget document, I love that the links to go back and forth on the PDF. It makes it really easy. So thank you and, and your staff. Appreciate it.
Chris?
Nicole, how much did you say the reimbursement is for the lunch?
I said the increase, I think, was twenty-four point five cents.
Oh, that's just the increase. Okay.
I think, I think lunch is at three ninety-one right now, but I'd have to, I'd have to double check that.
And, and where is the mon, so the students are all getting free lunches?
Yes.
And where is the funding for that coming from? The state?
Federal and state.
Federal and state. Yeah, it's a COVID thing, right. And so how long do you expect that to last?
It's currently being debated in Washington right now, actually.
Yeah.
Probably not that long.
Through this fiscal year.
Yeah, well, until October, November, and then it might change. Well, that, that's kind of a break for us. Nice numbers on there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from Nicole on the financial? Roger or anybody else out there have any questions?
I mean, Roger has his hand raised, but he called on him and he didn't, didn't speak. So I don't know if Roger has a question.
Roger, do you?
Sorry, that was, that was leftover. No questions on the revolving.
Your arm was getting tired, Roger.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item is the Burlington High School renovation. Mr. Kuna?
Okay. Well, again, I don't have a report, but I do have information to add to tonight's conversation. So today, at about ten thirty this morning, I received a spreadsheet and a conversation, phone call with the estimators. The estimators is the last part of the report that we were waiting on. So I had previously received a draft report for the BHS feasibility study here at the high school, which was to focus on the HVAC systems and then potentially any triggers that may come about with the renovation thirty thirty rule. So the estimators were the last part of that feasibility report that we need. Like I said, I received that today. So while myself and the report team definitely need to kind of go through some of these numbers, I think the numbers are going to be a lot larger than what we anticipated. So I will give you some numbers, but I also want to stress that today at ten thirty, this was an estimate given to us and needs to be gone through with a fine tooth comb. There's a high and a low estimate. And again, when we say the estimates, that's just a job that the company has to go out and look at what projects are out in the communities right now, similar to Burlington throughout New England. Again, we know that gas prices are going up, construction costs and labor is going up, materials are going up or have gone up in the past. Will that go down? We don't know. But again, let's please take these numbers today with a grain of salt. But also there's some merit to this as well too, because these are real numbers. For reference, there's over two hundred and ninety line items just in the estimation. And I will get to the numbers, but I want to stress a couple more things first. In regards to the thirty thirty rule that we talked about, that's thirty percent of the overall square footage of the building or thirty percent of the value that the building is assessed at. Forty-nine million dollar building, approximately sixteen million is our trigger point. Roughly, the HVAC system is coming in close to thirty million. Close to. Now, again, there's some options in there for us to make that a higher or lower number. But again, with the recommendation that they're putting forward. Um, but again, with the recommendation that they're putting forward, new ductwork, new boiler systems, new plumbing, new pumps, you know, thirty million, uh, is not too far off from the sixteen to eighteen million that we got five years ago, um, with some inflation and some, some new costs. Uh, and again, there's some options in here. I fully understand that thirty million dollars is a lot, lot, lot of money. But what's a lot of money is the triggers that are going to, um, be triggered by that thirty million dollar cost or even an eighteen million dollar HVAC system. Um, we're looking at potentially, just by the estimators, estimation is sixty-five to eighty million dollars.
Just for the triggers.
That's for a full HVAC system, that means upgrading sprinklers, which are approximately four million dollars just on this building. Uh, approximately four and a half million dollars in plumbing renovations. Uh, we had talked about elevators before, the three elevators in this building needing to be upgraded, approximately two point three million dollars based on the estimation. Um, and again, I gave you a high and a low of that sixty-five to eighty million estimation, but this is prior to any variances that we may apply for. So again, the two long hallways, A and B, that go to, I'm sorry, streets one and two here. Um, those have an estimation of approximately two million dollars, like one point nine million, to retrofit both of those to be in compliance. Now, if we were to apply to the state and get a variance on that, there's a small fee to apply for the state, but it's definitely not the two million dollars of the renovation of those hallways. Um, same with the elevators, like I said, approximately two point three million, um, to renovate the elevators. If we were granted a variance, you know, that's approximately between those two projects, four and a half million dollars off that cost. Um, again, some of these variances come off and we start looking at closer to that sixty million dollar project. Um, some of these variances don't come off and we start looking on that higher end closer to that eighty. And again, um, when you look at a building that's fifty years old and you look at the way some of the codes were then versus some of the codes that are now, that thirty-thirty rule uh, is a major factor in what happens into a building like this. Um, with a building that's approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, um, the estimates are basically about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars for repairing and upgrading, um, whereas it's approximately six hundred dollars per square foot for a new building. Um, so while we may be looking at potentially sixty to eighty, uh, just in upgrades of this building, you may be looking at upwards of two to three hundred million, um, to replace a building of this size. Uh, still about the same timeline for amount of work, we'd still have to look at, obviously, how do we displace any students in classrooms, we'd have to look at phasing in and out, um, which is also something that would come in a report like this. Um, again, initial information, a lot to digest, like I said, I got these estimates today at ten thirty this morning. Um, I'm sure you have a million questions, as do I. There still is an expectation that now that we have the last part of that puzzle, um, that we will have a full report, um, which will have every single piece of detail that I discussed and more. Um, again, this is going to be a multiple-page report, it's not going to be three, it's going to be a book mistake. And, uh, um, again, I think we have a lot of work ahead of us, and we think we have a lot of conversations ahead of us. Um, but like I said, I would take merit in the fact that the estimation is an estimation and there's a variance of approximately twenty million dollars. Um, but I don't think we're no longer looking at a twelve, fifteen, twenty million dollar project, um, which we may have thought we were in five years ago.
Never, never.
Chris?
Um, Bob, in addition to the HVAC that you just talked about and the, um, the code triggers, what else is in the full renovation? You know, if you, I know you don't have real numbers on everything, but for instance, um, what else do you need to get real numbers on to do a full renovation of the building? You know, science labs, doorways, lights, everything.
Um, so I guess that would be up to the committee and me deciding what would we like to get estimates on. Um, so what we're looking at right now, again, the feasibility study is to focus on the HVAC system and any triggers. I don't want to say that a science lab is cosmetic, I'm not saying that, but that's not, um, really reported in this project right here.
Yeah.
Um, let's say we were to dig up hallways one and two, then obviously replacing those with new floors and new tiles would be included. Uh, but once we start getting into classrooms, uh, and even locker spaces and things like that, um, that's not included in this project.
So where, excuse me, where I'm going with this is, um, we have a lot of other work to do, like the entire science department. Um, I, and I'm not sure, probably a lot of other departments. Uh, at what point are we, you know, just not able to renovate our way out of this situation? On the other hand, I don't really think we have any ability to look at a new building because there isn't anywhere in town to put it. Is that correct?
Correct. Well.
Fox Hill?
I mean, Fox Hill does have twenty.
Thirty-seven acres.
Yeah, but twenty plus on, um, what do you call it, undeveloped.
I don't think that would go over well with the neighborhood.
Nope.
I am not suggesting it.
Can I also chime in through the chair? Um, the window for the statement of interest is open right now. Um, so the plan is, is with obviously support from the school committee, that we'll submit for, um, a tenth time of the high school statement of interest.
For reimbursement.
Or for project support with, along with us, yes.
And Bob and I are talking, do we try to do an accelerated repair instead of a renovation, just to focus on the HVAC system? So we're gonna go back over the triggers, have another call with people from the MSBA. We've been doing, um, we've been doing a full renovation and not an accelerated repair just because in this particular building, once you trigger the HVAC system, you just heard, you sort of get everything else, but if they're not going to support the renovation, maybe they would help us with the thirty million dollars for the, um, for the HVAC. So we want to have that conversation, we have to put more time in. Um, there's not an easy site in town. Um, Arlington, um, again, larger high school, maybe not square footage, but more students and then we have, um, I think is around three hundred million dollars. Um, I think someone shared with me that, um, was Lexington High School just invited in?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Um, so I, I'm, I'd want to bet someone lunch that will be around four hundred million dollars there. Um, so I just think that, um, eh, there's no, you know, easy way, um, around this. Um, so, I don't know, so we can, we'll, we'll have some more conversation about it, but there's no, there's no inexpensive, um, simple fix here.
But there isn't any place to put a, a new high school, is there, seriously?
Um.
On this site?
Through the chair, I, I don't believe they would allow building on this site. I don't believe they would even allow this building to be built on this site, given current.
Because of the wetlands.
Yes, but I, I'm, I'm not an expert, so we would have to have someone look at that, whether they could phase it in, knock down, knock down a wing at a time, um, but then we would have to figure out how to displace, um, you know, those kids. It would, again, it would be a, um, yeah.
Yeah.
And Tom, we would start sometime in, um, April seventh or something, right?
And, and again, through the chair, um, early, early estimates, they are projecting that this would take, uh, potentially two to three years. Uh, because as Dr. Conti mentioned, um, you could not, A, shut down the whole entire building and renovate it in the summertime with the HVAC systems. Uh, so you would have to look at either a hallway or a wing at a time to dislo- um, to, to move any staff or children out of those locations and then renovate those areas and then to come back, um, and move to a different area, so phasing it out. Where do we even put those classrooms? We don't even know yet, but ultimately, we can do the work with the people in those locations, so. It's a big, big concept and a big project. It can be, but. Yeah?
Um, I'm not surprised at anything you said. Um, I'm extremely frustrated, not at you, but at the process. Um. We've been talking about this the whole time I've been on this committee. We have only got information about the HVAC renovation. We need new science labs. If we're going to tear up the building to put in HVAC, we shouldn't do it piecemeal. We should look at the whole building and what it needs. This town has the resources to do it right. And what I'm hearing is some, and I don't even know, and, cause we haven't seen the report yet and I've been waiting for the report and I've been waiting for the report and I've been waiting for the report, and it isn't there, so there was nothing that could be done. And yet, I'm hearing they're talking about new boilers, but we should be looking at whether we should put in geothermal wells and whether we should put in air heat pumps. We shouldn't be just having a report on boilers. And I have had this conversation with you, Mr. Kuna, in the past, when we put out the RFP for this feasibility study. I was told it's just going to be, you know, what do we have and what do we need? And I was pretty clear that I thought that the RFP should include all of our options, like heat pumps, whether they're geothermal, whether they're air pumps, whatever it is, that we need to be looking at sustainable energy in this building, efficient energy in this building. And that, so there's several issues going around, and I'm trying to be rational. Um, and I, I hope I am, um, at the moment, but it's very frustrating and I don't feel we can go forward with just the HVAC, although obviously we can, we can just do the HVAC. I don't think that makes any sense at all. Um, and so I would like to know what the plan is. Um, and, uh, and that brings me to something I was going to ask anyway, which is that I would like to request that there be a meeting that I can attend and anyone else who agrees. I would like to meet with our town administrator and our town treasurer, uh, John, Mr. Sagarino, Mr. D'Nizio and Dr. Conti and you and anyone and, anyone else who should be there. Because for seven years, I've been, eh, under the understanding that we have a long-term debt schedule, uh, for the town. These, I'm trying to go back and do this logically, but there were, there are people who feel like the schools have not been planning. And we have been planning, we've been planning for ten years to renovate the high school. The high school, there's money in the long-term debt schedule, to my understanding, to help pay for that, maybe not the full cost, but there was some money set aside. Um, we have, um, also, and the reason that we've been putting in a statement of interest for the high school with MSBA for ten years is because when we had, we've been, the school department has been looking ahead. A ten-year master plan was done five years ago in twenty seventeen, and they said that our top priority of buildings to be fixed was the high school. So we've been focused on the high school, and that makes sense. But we need to move forward with the high school, okay, in my opinion. And then, when it became clear that the state was not going to support us through their school building authority support, we decided to go for the second, the second priority on the master plan was the Fox Hill School. And we were fortunate that the Massachusetts School Building Authority thinks that's a project that they would be willing to support. And it's a project we need to do. So here we are, sitting here with two very expensive projects that we need to get the town to, you know, work with us and figure out. But I need to know how the long-term debt schedule works because this town has resources and it has planning. And so that people in town aren't like, well, we can't do, because we, we, we can do and we need to do both of these projects. And they're both expensive, I, I, you know, I understand that, and I'm willing to do the work that need, that we need. But I, I feel just so frustrated that, you know, it's been two, three, four years that we've had this report. Now, I guess it's been nine, ten months, right? I asked you that last week. Okay, this particular report has only been ten months that we've been waiting for it. But we've had other things that we've been working on for two years, at least, because I know we had capital, uh, warrant articles from town meeting two years in a row. So I know it's at least two years we've been planning this report. And, and yes, we need to do the reports, we need to do the backup, but we can't just wait. And, and we need to know, eh, you know, if I go to a Ways and Means Committee meeting and Ways and Means Committee people say, well, but there isn't money for this. We need to know what the situation is so we can explain to people, yes, there is, or no, there isn't unless we do certain things. So I will stop there, but I, I would like to request, Dr. Conti, that you arrange a meeting with me and those people and any other group that you feel it's appropriate. Thank you.
Martha, I'd like to suggest that you call, um, John D'Nizio and ask to meet with him. Um, he did go over a lot of this information at one of the Ways and Means meetings. And besides our needs in schools, the town has needs as well. And the, the cost of the high school project is, it's a lot of money. And, I mean, realistically, it's going to have to be fit into the bond schedule in a way that doesn't clobber people with a fifty percent tax increase. You know, I know that they are concerned that the boilers might fail. And it, and in that case, um, it would be emergency funding, and I believe that they're prepared if that happens. Um, I, I share your frustration. Um, it's been a long time and we've been trying very, very hard to get SBA to help us fund this because it's a lot of money. And if you look at Lexington, Arlington and these other communities with their new schools, they have gotten SBA funding so that their two or three or four hundred million dollar buildings have cost them only half of that or a little more than half of that, which is still more than what we're looking at at the moment, although it doesn't include everything. It, well, that's, that was where my question came from, because, you know, when we add this all up, what number do we get? But I, you know, in order to be fair all around, we have to realize that we can't totally implode on the taxpayer. And I think that Paul Sagarino and John D'Nizio have, um, a great plan. Now, it may not cover this, they may have to, uh, work harder and chop in their pencils in order to accommodate us, but I, I think that the details you want, you should go to them to get, okay?
Bob? Um, through the chair, um, two things, please, if I could, uh, ask for clarification and then also just make a comment. Um, my understanding is, is that, um, last year, the conversation shifted where we changed our focus from the high school to Fox Hill. Uh, and that's when the push came from this committee to really find out, um, what the estimate would be, um, which is the impetus for what I believe is this feasibility study. Um, so I think we're following that path of saying, at least I believe that we're following that path, um, at the committee's request to get the feasibility study, so that way we had real data to then have these conversations with the town, uh, because we weren't having MSBA, um, partnership or, or funding. Um, so again, maybe I'm frustrated, um, I'm sorry, wrong word, maybe I'm confused, um, with your comments, with the timeframe, um, Ms. Simon. Um, that being said, if I wasn't clear, maybe I'd like to, um, re-clarify that when I was trying to present on the limited data that I have in front of me, is that, um, options were presented to me and options are in here. Um, I'm not going to say, say specifically geothermal, but what I'm going to say is that there are different options for, um, the plumbing costs, different options for the electrical, different options for the HVAC systems. Um, so those could drive those costs. When I said approximately thirty million dollars for the HVAC systems, um, I think the HVAC systems alone is somewhere like seventeen line items in here with options. Even something like the, uh, elevators, um, have four different, different options for repair. Um, I use an approximate average on the high side of the two point three million to come up with that number. Um, but there are some lower-cost options if we weren't to get those variances, um, where we could potentially just upgrade some of the internal boxes as opposed to replacing the whole entire shaft or doing any type of, you know, external work. Um, so again, without having the report in front of you or, um, me being able to tell you that, like I said, a multi-hundred-page report, uh, without reading it, um, yeah, please be aware that we were not just presented, you must buy this one.
you must buy this one boiler, this one, um, fifty amp fuse, and then this one ten-foot spool of wire. No.
Yeah, I understand that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Kuna? It's going to be an ongoing problem. It's not going to have a quick solution or an easy solution, so we all just have to understand that. And we're going to have to do the best we can and work with the town as best we can. Um, I always remind them that from the mid-sixties or the mid-seventies, we built like six schools in this town between elementary schools and what's now the middle school and what's now Francis Wyman was the junior high at the time. And that was before MSBA and whatnot, so there was certainly history of, of the town investing probably a substantial part of their capital budget over a fa- fairly short period of time to address school needs. So, um, things cycle in and things cycle out, and we're kind of back to that cycle again. So, it's, um, uh, they're going to be difficult conversations, but they're going to be necessary conversations. So, we'll just keep chipping away and, uh, we'll work at them. If there's nothing else under this agenda item, um, the only other item on our public agenda is old business. Does everybody, anybody have any old business they'd like to bring forward?
Uh, Mr. Chair, not, not old business, I apologize, but I, I did just want to mention, and we will revisit this, um, at the end of the month, is we've had, um, a growing demand for, um, for staff using, uh, a religious holiday which they're entitled to on Good Friday, which is Friday, April fifteenth, which is the Friday prior to, um, April break. So, um, we're requesting that people get those, um, leave slips in if they're going to take it. It may be, we, we may not have enough staff to run, um, schools on that Friday. Um, and if that's the case, we'll let families know, um, at the end of, very early part of April, so they'll have several weeks to, to plan. If we don't have enough, if we have so many people celebrating, um, that religious holiday, um, and we cancel school that day, that would push us, uh, one extra day, um, at the end of the year. We're already into, um, I think June twentieth, um, is a, is a, um, holiday, so we're already at June twenty-first. So, we'll have calendar conversations very soon, but, uh, I, I just, um, we, we are, um, we're watching, um, the number of staff we'll have available on Friday, on, um, Friday, April fifteenth, which is, um, Good Friday this year.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further under old business, we do have need for the executive session, uh, this evening under Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, um, because to do so in open meeting would be detrimental, would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district, and the CHISO declares. Um, and also to discuss some security issues, because to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies, um, in a public session would be detrimental as well. Uh, we will return to public session solely for purposes of adjournment, but the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Third.
Um, Ms. Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we have an executive session.